I am joined by my colleagues on the city councillor, on the city council councillor Goomersindo Gomez. Thank you councillor for joining, as well as council president Marcus Williams.
Hello.
So President Williams asked that I call this meeting and made some introductions to some of you. I know that we've dealt with each other in the past on a variety of different issues Vanessa and community music school Ryan Karen and I understand that there's a pretty interesting initiative that you guys are working on that you'd like to share some information with us about and get some feedback on so. The floor is yours. I don't know Karen or who would like to present?
Yeah, well, I thank you so much. So I did send some very expansive slides just on a general overview of the Springfield Central Cultural District and the cultural partnership. But I think that we'd be here all day if I went through all of those slides and was really hoping and thankful for you having all of us here. Eileen McCaffrey, who's the board chair of the cultural partnership and Vanessa Ford, who is our partner and program manager for the trust transfer project. Ryan McCollum has joined for the project that we really want to highlight today. As our kind of campaign manager, I'll say, and disseminator of information. And we have Summers Smith, who just joined us and she, thanks to the city's support that we receive annually as part of the cultural compact is our. She does it all. So marketing, the website, the social media and events when we're able to have those. So if I can, just turn it over to Eileen for a little bit of background information and I'm sorry, I'm Karen Finn, this executive director of the cultural partnership and I came on in 2018. And much has changed in the short amount of time that I've been with the organization. But I was hoping Eileen could start off with an introduction of how she's seen things evolve. And then we'll let Vanessa as the program manager for trust transfer, talk to the city council about that program and see how we can work with the city council to either disseminate or have you involved in some other way. And then if we have time, I can talk about other things going on within the cultural district. And I'm also happy to just let you read the slides and we can have a conversation later if time doesn't permit.
Karen, before you turn it over to Eileen, could you just tell us about the relationship between the Springfield Cultural Partnership 501 and the district, how they're different and related?
Yes, so the Springfield cult central cultural part or district, sorry, too many S's and P's and D's. Was founded in 2014 as a designated cultural district in the state of Massachusetts. And it encompasses about nine blocks up and down Main Street in Springfield and you know off shoot streets off of Main Street. The cultural partnership was formed in 2016. I believe around March of 2016 to be a 501(c)(3) that oversees the cultural district, but also it allows us in our work to kind of reach out into other areas of Springfield versus only focusing on the smaller cultural district radius. And most cultural districts are see themselves seated within the city. We are an independently run 501(c)(3) and we're membership based. So most of our, or I'll say all of our funding, aside from the annual funding from the city, which is around $10,000. We receive through grant initiatives and through membership fees. So I think we currently have 48 paid members in the cultural partnership and those range in you know, annual dues based on if it's an organization, if it's an individual. But that's the history.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Of course.
So the district is a place and and your organization, the partnership is the people who service the place and beyond, is that right?
Exactly, yeah.
So the the district doesn't have like a committee or anything outside of the partnership?
No, well, it's other than it is overseen, so we have to meet certain standards. Is set forth by the Mass Cultural Council and we get re-designated based on those criteria. Every five years, I believe. So we received re-designation in 2019. I believe the early part of 2019. So five years out, we would need to be re-designated as a cultural district. And the unique thing about Springfield Central Cultural District is that we have a cultural compact. And I think we're the very first to have a cultural compact and that is with the city of Springfield, the cultural, the Mass Cultural Council and the partnership. And it really set forth saying, we're all going to work towards this common goal of, you know, activating our downtown cultural district. But partnering together and working alongside one another in collaborative way. And it's also, I'm sorry, so includes the Springfield cultural council as well. So Andrew Cade, who leads the cultural council, we work very closely with him. And we have some initiatives specifically around the cultural compact. One which is Thank An Artist, which we debuted, the inaugural Thank An Artist was in 2019. Held at MGM Springfield. And because of COVID, we weren't able to do that again, obviously, this year and likely will skip this September also because of restrictions. But Summers now curates a WTCC 90.7 Thank An Artist radio broadcast every single week highlighting something about arts and culture that is happening in Springfield. And that airs around about three times a day.
That's true.
And Michael, I think one of the things we can do in, as we talk a little bit about weaving some of those themes is put a little context. Karen and I had organized this so that we could sort of draw the through line and then we can talk about trust transfer. But there's a lot of pieces that work together, but also have some sort of standalone responsibilities. So maybe as we talk a little bit more, we can make that so that it doesn't become a jumble of acronyms and cultural this and cultural that. There's kind of a through line that we were going to be drawing. So hopefully
That'd be great.
Get to that. Okay. Karen, was there anything else before we jump in?
No, I let, so if that's okay, I'll let Eileen start off with kind of this background that includes like pre Karen and then pre Summers and then we'll weave through as Eileen suggested and Vanessa will talk about trust transfer and I'm happy to talk about anything.
I have a question please.
Okay.
When you say that assign a cultural compact on Tuesday, January 16th of what year?
That was, I think that was 2018.
January 16th, but has no year.
Okay, I think that that was, that was right before I came on. So it was 2017.
2017.
Cultural, actually it was 2016 because that's when the cultural partnership, I can get you the exact date. I have a copy of it.
Okay.
And maybe, maybe that would be a good jumping off point because that's exactly what I was going to be just sort of setting the tone for of how, how do all these things relate to, to each other? And so again, I'm Eileen McCaffrey. I'm the chair of the cultural partnership, the independent 501(c)(3). But also I'm the executive director of the Community Music School of Springfield. And the Mass Cultural Council started many years ago, these cultural districts and made it really a way to activate the downtown, but also to create designations. So when we first started talking in Springfield about creating the cultural district designation, that was working with the Mass Cultural Council. What we soon found was the opportunity to bring together cultural assets in our community and also to partner with our, with the city government. Everybody was ready for that to happen and that is why we went from being just a cultural district, which there's, I think there's what, 48 of them across the state, Karen?
Yes.
Springfield took a whole different take and said, oh, wait a minute, this is just the beginning. This isn't the end. This is the beginning. And so we created the cultural partnership as an independent 501(c)(3) that would continue to build on the cultural district initiative, but would go well beyond that and bring in individuals and artists and organizations to work together and to have a common place, a jumping off point to share resources. Now here's what's interesting, the cultural compact. It was just this idea that the Mass Cultural Council had that said, if we have three legs of a stool, if we have the, the city government and the the local cultural councils, which we're getting funding from the state. So all of the arts and culture organizations that are funded through the Springfield Cultural Council, which is Andrew Cade and that, that wonderful organization. They, they're an entity, you've got the city and then you get the cultural district or in our case, the cultural partnership. What would happen if those three were really tightly connected and worked together and constantly talked to each other? Then you would have so much more synergy. So we became, Springfield became the very first site in across the state to not only sign the cultural compact, but to do something about it and to work together in partnership. That's why the name of a cultural, the Springfield Cultural Partnership happened, because we are just all about making sure that people are brought together and then their individual gifts can be brought out in and sort of amplified. So that's the kind of the, the way it worked. And then what was really exciting was because we are so unique. Karen and I have been asked to speak at state convenings, all, many, many of the Mass Cultural Council state convening about how does Springfield do it? Like, how do you guys work together so effectively when other organizations, other cities, large and small across the Commonwealth haven't been able to do what we've been able to do? And what we say is that we trust each other, that we build deep relationships and that we kind of need each other in a way that maybe some other cities or towns don't. And so what that led to was when the Mass Cultural Council recognized that the public health funding, I mean, this was pre-pandemic, but the public health and access to really creative ways to build healthy communities was a priority at the state level. The Mass Cultural Council piloted in Springfield something called Culture RX, which is the intersection of art and public health and how together that fun, not just the funding sources, but also the creativity of that sector could be put in. As somebody described, it was like making sure that the artists were at the beginning of the decision to build, like to, to bake the cake instead of waiting until the cake was baked. Culture RX, which is a partnership with the Public Health Institute of Western Mass and with the Caring Health Center, launched two years ago and we were the first. There's one in the Berkshires and there was one in Springfield. That was it across the state. And I'm happy to report that that pilot program, which went just was such an important way of building this intersection, this sort of cross-sector partnership between the health funding and the art sector is exactly what led us to the Trust Transfer Project. So if you just keep thinking about like, okay, cultural district starts, builds into this cultural compact, which is bringing together the resources of our, of our city and then intersecting with public health. It led us to where we are today. So that's my quick overview of what brought us to why the trust transfer is uniquely Springfield. There's nobody else doing this that I'm aware of. And that we've been told by the Mass Cultural Council that, that this city is one of the most important launch points for these creative initiatives across the state, arguably in the country, because many of the things we're doing are also models at the national level. So with that, I will hand it over to our fabulous you know, person that was selected to be like leading this initiative. And the reason it's not for nothing that we called it the Trust Transfer Project, because we believe that communities who trust each other and who bring the arts and the, the sort of health realities together, there's, there's no stopping them in terms of what kinds of solutions to building healthy communities we can do together. So Vanessa Ford, who I'm proud to say is a faculty member at the music school, but also is uniquely positioned to just build, continue to build trust among her network that she currently has and all the other organizations and individuals that she has just been a part of was the perfect person, the perfect ambassador to lead this initiative. So without further ado, you're over here Vanessa in my box. Pass you over.
Thank you so much, Eileen. Oh, and Karen, thank you so much. Councillors, good afternoon and so blessed to be able to be with you today and just share so much about this project that Eileen has talked about is, is about community and unity in the community and sharing trust. And so what we've designed this to do is really, really give artists an opportunity to be uplifted and empowered. This is an incredible collaboration because what Community Music School of Springfield has done along in partnership with the Springfield Cultural Partnership is very unique. It's an opportunity for us to really, really give artists, young and old across the city of Springfield, the opportunity to express health imaging in such a different way, in such a personal way. And even an intimate way to just be able to describe what it feels like to message positive health messages across the city in a way that says, I am from the community. This is how I feel. This is what I'm going through. This is how I'm coping. This is what I understand about COVID-19. This is what I think we should do about COVID-19. This is my voice being raised as an artist, you know, to just say, we can do amazing things together. We can change the dynamics of our communities and bring our communities, each of our communities to a healthier place. And so I'm so thankful that the artists have been given an opportunity to really just share messaging such as mask wearing, hand washing, social distancing, what it feels like to cope and also what it feels like to hope through the pandemic. From the beginning stages of the pandemic, we know that black and Latinx communities have been extraordinarily impacted. And how often we don't get an opportunity to hear from those voices that have been the most impacted. But through Trust Transfer Project, those individuals who are usually left in the dark have been given an opportunity to create amazing artwork that expresses their feelings about what we should be doing in the community and how we can come together to fight, you know, COVID-19, how we can stop the spread of COVID-19. So this is an amazing opportunity that we've given to artists to really be the, the voice for how we message in the communities of color in the South End and Metro Center and also has spread out actually in such an amazing way into the other pockets of our communities in Springfield because we want to transfer trust. So if you think about just being able to pass trust along and build a trust alliance that is really sustainable for the future. How do we do that? We enable organizations and our faith community along with our health institutions to just really be able to come together and support artists in such a different way. The reason why it's so unique is because the opportunity for organizations to be a partnership, not so much a lead, if that makes sense, but a real legitimate partner to support artists in our community. So we have an extensive group of sponsors that have joined Trust Transfer and committed to sponsoring artists throughout the city. And it means so much to us because they have trusted us to become a partner in a way that says, I'm going to get on board with this idea of just helping an artist feel supported and feel lifted up. I'm going to be part of this change because we know that when one joins the opportunity to change, then it makes room for others to share their gifts to make change. And so we know that artists have the ability to create messages that get folks' attention in our community in a particular way, that folks from outside these big marketing companies that come in and do these statewide you know, campaigns are not able to do. They're not able to touch on the ground as impactful as we feel residents of our own communities can do. And so the exciting, the exciting part is that organizations locally have joined on as partners. And the, the list is growing, as I said, and it, it ranges from churches in our faith community to small businesses, to large corporations. We have people just joining on to sponsor artists in such a powerful way and making the commitment to really say, we want to lift artists up in a special way. So this is, this is an opportunity for the city council to, number one, help us to message Trust Transfer Project in a positive way throughout the city and throughout the wards to let folks know that Trust Transfer Project is an opportunity to be really part of an, a movement and initiative that has never really taken place in Springfield before. And collaborations like this don't usually have what we say like a blueprint, right? So we're starting out with an idea. And the collaboration started with a partnership of trust and it's building from there. So every time we have an opportunity to share with another organization or another educational institute about what it feels like to transfer trust to artists, we feel like it's growing and building into something really, really powerful and impactful for Springfield's future. So what we really would love for the, for the city council to consider doing is if you would even sponsor yourselves two or more artists in Springfield. We encourage you to just think about what young people or artists that you know in the community that can be part of, of what we're doing. We're able to give through the grant that we received through the Urban Agenda Grant, many grants of $500 to organizations to share with artists. And so it's an incredible opportunity to just really lift up artists as well as give them a little monetary gift to say, you know, your, your voice matters, but your art is also valuable to us. And so we share it, we're getting ready to share it. Right now, all of these organizations and artists are working together to produce and create all of this wonderful art that in the coming weeks, you're going to see it all over Springfield. It's going to be so exciting to see all this artwork disseminated in all these different forms. We're going to have visual art pieces displayed all over pockets of Springfield, highlighting all these wonderful artists, young and old. We're also going to have music created originally for this project. On the radios and airways, we're going to have videos done and presentation collaborative videos put together and placed in venues that are able to promote those on the screens and waiting rooms and different places. So we're really excited to get the artwork out into the community so that folks can really be impacted and see what their own neighbors in the community have done to make an impact on COVID-19 and the health of, of this, of the Springfield community. And we want ultimately folks to really share this information so they can seek the information for themselves. So we're not, you know, saying not necessarily, it won't be a potion that says, you know, go out and get the vaccine today. It may not say that, but it might say vaccines save lives. You never know what a child might create that makes an impact to an older person who has no idea about where to get the vaccine or how to get the vaccine, how to move from those feelings we have of anxiety to getting, getting, taking that step to making that appointment. And so we really just want to impact Springfield in such a different way. And we hope that you'll join the Trust Transfer Project, you know, call it caravan, to be part of what we're doing in such a special way. We want everyone to be part of it because we don't want to do this, you know, by ourselves. We know that together we can do great things. And so we're expecting amazing outcome from this project and we just want you to be part of it because we know that every councillor in our city makes an impact in your ward. And we know that your, the people in, the residents in your wards matter specifically to you. And we just want everyone to be embraced as an artist. There's no judgment on our art. There's no competition on the art. None of the art that's being presented and submitted will be denied. And I think I love the fact that everyone is just feeling embraced and lifted up. And we need more of that and less of, of the, you know, denial of, of everyone's voice and participation in, in, in this initiative is particularly kind to everyone's, you know, abilities. And so I love that. So thank you for the opportunity to just really share about how exciting it is and how, how wonderful it feels. And I'm so humbled and honored to just be able to talk about it with you all. And it just really allow that another opportunity to transfer trust to you that you might also begin to transfer that trust out into the wards that you serve. So thank you so much for opportunity to talk to you today.
Yeah, that's, that's terrific. Thank you. Thank you very much Vanessa and Karen and Eileen for your presentation. That's you guys have quite the team, very compelling story. I don't know if Ryan and Summers, if you guys wanted to add anything to that before we get into questions?
Yeah, just Mr. Chairman. You know, the council's support would be awesome. And so you all are duly elected folks in the different wards and at large and your voice matters. And so support from you all as a sponsor and as somebody can lift up the program would be very, it would be awesome. And then also I'm probably going to need some help. I mean dissemination is really the key part for, for me and why, why, why I'm on the team. And so, you know, in being in touch with the, the city departments about how we can display this art in a creative way in a, in an inexpensive way as well. You know, so I've already reached out to some of them, but having the city council's voice behind that too would be helpful and not just city-owned things, but you know, we really want to make sure and be deliberate and intentional about where we disseminate this art so that the folks that need to see it, see it. Right? So not just sitting in a waiting room at a, at Bay State Hospital, right, to see, to see a message on healthcare, but to see it where they, where they live their everyday lives. And so being creative about that and just knowing, you know, getting ideas about where that could be would be very helpful. And so, you know, we'd love to have you on board and, and, and be helpful in this effort because I think as Eileen and Vanessa and Karen have said, it's unique to do this, this kind of trust transfer. And it's, you know, probably one of the only ones in the country, if, if there's any. And it's something that we want to replicate in other venues and for other needs and for other uses. And so you know, getting out of this, this dynamic that we're in where it's, you know, the same people at the top always kind of messaging down to the other folks and, and, and actually transferring the trust to those people on the ground to talk to their peers on the ground is something that needs to happen in all walks of life.
Absolutely, absolutely. Summers, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
Um, not really. Um, I just want to say that this, like Ryan said, this project is important because it does give a voice to those that don't often have a voice, um, that, or they get lost in the sauce for lame returns or, but I think it is a very important project and having the city's help does go a long way, especially when we want to push it the way we want to. And I do see this being something in the long term that really just brings our communities closer and as we move forward in opening phases, I think this will be a good initiative to have for people to understand that the vaccine and every, all that information that is maybe just too much or gets lost, that we can condense it and just bring it just a straightforward presentation. So people are, they accept it and they welcome it and they, they trust, you know, trust is a hard thing, especially in Springfield. Everyone's very close to what they're used to and comfortable. So we want to, you know, it's important to kind of give people other comfort zones and let them know that there's
Let them know that there's other resources and what else is out there, especially for the, you know, uh people of color communities.
Thank you. Um so I have, I have some questions, but before I do, uh. Counselor Gomez or Counselor Williams, do you guys have anything you'd like to ask?
Hey, counselor. Yes, um, Mr. Chair, thank you. I, I have more so a comment uh and and not so much a question, but I really just wanna thank our, our guests for joining us today. Um this came by way of uh word to me through Counselor Walsh. Who we, and then we all jumped in an email thread and I kind of coordinated the specifics around the meeting, of course, um. With uh spearheading this uh Mr. Chair yourself, but I thought it was appropriate to have this in the context of the, the youth subcommittee because. Much of the arts includes you and it was certainly so much a part of my life growing up. And I think it's an understated um reality of how much it really um helps younger folks kind of. Have dis- healthy distractions as we're going through school, but also it just provides a lot of life skills. Um that are, you know, very important as, as of course folks grow older. Um so I just wanna thank you all for joining and explaining that. And uh one, one interesting thing that I'll say is I was on the response uh subcommittee yesterday, uh chaired by Counselor Letterman. And one thing that we discussed was. The lack of media and allies and black and brown communities as it relates to COVID nineteen. And I, as you all were speaking, I'm like, wow, well, this is one of the, the uh, the, the steps that we should be taking. And and perhaps mitigating step um to uh, you know, to, to that reality uh. And or in the absence of, of such media that should be there explaining the risks of COVID nineteen and the purpose of getting vaccinated. So um again, I just wanna thank you all for the work you do and I look forward to participating in any way that I can um. Um given uh my role as a counselor here. So thank you.
Counselor Gomez, did you have anything you'd like to add?
Yes, uh beautiful what we're talking about and we have seen. Uh lots of this in downtown with the uh Puerto Rican painters coming through and and doing this. Truth uh in, in buildings. And we do have within our community. Uh but a few folks that are, that are, will be interested, especially in the music department areas. Uh I just wanna make sure that our communities in the Hispanic sectors are not being forgotten. And that they will be included. And I myself, uh whatever I can do as an individual and as a counselor. A, a, a council member to ensure that this comes to, to, to happen because I think it's. That without uh this cultural being set out there, especially in my community. And in the black community that we need to know who we are, where we come from and what is our. Uh our, our, our. Thing that pulls, pulls us together and, and, and keeps us alive, especially in the. With the rice and beans department with the Puerto Rican community. And, and, and because I want that for my grandkids. I want my grandkids to, to remember their roots and know where they're coming from. That, that's my feeling. So I'm here, I, I'm yours to, to work in the Hispanic community.
Oh, sorry, sorry, Chair, Chairman.
Oh, no, go ahead, go ahead.
I just wanna say that I will contact you today, if that's okay, because I wanna share with you. The partners in the Latinx community that we already have, um both in the South and the North End. And I want you um brainstorm with you with some more ideas. You can share to direct us and point us to other organization, uh organizations, churches, individuals. Um artists that we could really highlight for this and and would love to collaborate with you. On how to make sure that their voices are heard in a, in a very particular way because this grant was meant for. Um that particular, very particular reason. So thank you so much, Council.
And that, and not decide counselor up for something, but I'm, I imagine there's, there's several. Wonderful artists who are veterans and in our party or organization that could actually benefit from this as well.
Yeah.
What you're thinking, cap on and know who those folks are. You know, we can get them some money like. Like Vanessa said, they should, the, the, their works are valuable. You know, a lot of people think about art and they think about. People just doing art in their spare time. You know, this, this is what people do for a living and which some people should do for a living. They spend time and treasure and talent. Um so they should be compensated for their work. So think about that, that could be great for it.
And that is just, there is another story that needs to come out here. As a matter of fact, I got an individual working in Pittsburgh, which he is quitting his job because. He has a master's i- i- in, in this type of work and he wants to go out there and expose this, this art. And it has to do with veterans in comeback where he was. And this needs to be exposed out there. You don't have an understanding of what it is uh because they have not been there.
Absolutely. And I, I just wanted to add in, um I think what uh Councilman Williams had said about lifting up youth voices, you know, coming out of. This pandemic where most of our young people have been in remote learning. Um and we saw the power of this trust transfer project. We, we did a pilot. Party of Western Mass. So before we rolled this out, we sort of did a test pilot and we uh. Funded the Islamic Society of Western Mass, who then chose four of their young youth leader. Who then chose their own artistic expression of what this meant. And we then partnered with Andrew Maxwell and a videographer, a wonderful videographer from Legacy Sounds who came in and videotaped. And we took pictures and we created a ceremony. It was Vanessa's idea to create a ceremony to really honor as we took. The pieces of art to be disseminated. Vanessa's point was we need to celebrate this moment. So I had the privilege of going to the Islamic Society of Western Mass and watching as these young people. You know, the music school is all about lifting up youth voices. So this just absolutely brought tears, not only to my eyes, but to everyone who was in the room. When each of the young stood up with their piece of art and they talked about. The agency that it provided them being able to express through their art in a time when the world was going crazy and there was so much. I mean, can you imagine as a kid with all of this stuff as adults that we don't understand with all this COVID reality? To be a kid and to have to navigate that and these expressions, these artistic expressions and their ability to take control and say. This is my story. This is my truth. I mean, it was, we, we were like, this. Is exactly how a community heals. So I'm just saying, like, we get the ability to just be little bits of. Of folks who get to fund through the grant, through that urban agenda grant. We get to fund. Five hundred dollars to the Islamic Society of Western Mass, who then finds four young artists. And gets them to individually tell a story. Meanwhile, their families and, you know, their, the community is all standing around watching. These young people describe what this feels like to them and how expressing it through art gave them a sense of purpose. So. I just wanted to paint a picture like this work, we know it works and it's powerful. And we're so honored to be entrusted. With this project because we're, we're just, we're, we're just activating. The truth that is out there in our community, which is this is, these times are hard, but the artists. And ex- and creative expression, it helps you cope for sure. So I just wanna say thank you um Congressman. Uh Councilman Williams for lifting up the idea also of youth voices being involved in this because that is a very important component. In multi-generational families of, of uh, you know, persuading and uh and, and informing. So we wanted to just make sure you understand that that is a, also an important part of this project for us.
Thank you very much. Um we also, I, I neglected to acknowledge earlier, we were joined by Counselor Tim Allen. Thank you, Counselor, for joining us. Did uh you have any questions or comments you wanted to raise?
Oh, I'm uh, I'm just happy to join. I wish I could have come earlier to hear some of the comments that were made earlier, but. I stand in full support of uh this initiative and I'm happy to help and, and help out with it uh however I can. So thank you for, for uh bringing all these good ideas to the fore and thanks for hosting the meeting, Counselor Benton.
Thank you. Um and I'm similarly impressed and would love to support the uh initiative. Uh to whatever extent you guys would uh recommend and suggest, we'd be happy to. Um provide you with that level of support. And I think that because you've got a lot of different things going on here, we would just need some. Direction from you and what we could do to be most helpful, whether that's pairing you up with locations or artists or. Uh municipal agents who can help you find places to display the art. I think all those things are sort of in our toolbox of, of skillset. Uh that we could assist with and um think you're hearing from all of us that we're ready, willing and able um to do it. Uh I had a couple of questions. Um one thing I just still don't understand, and I, I hate to get caught up on the acronym, but. One thing I still don't understand is, is what is the cultural council? And you mentioned somebody, another gentleman. What, what, what is their relationship to the district versus the partnership?
Sure. So the cultural council is, they're actually a grant-making entity. They receive. So they receive funds from the state, the Mass Cultural Council, and. They receive grant applications what, every year from the Springfield community to do. Art or cultural-based programs. Um Andrew Cade, who's also with the Urban League and a gazillion. Other things um runs that program and they're a city, well, there are cultural counselors. Um to include Steve Carey and I think that Tracy Whitfield is or has been. Um Sherri Cohen. So there may be ten counselors, cultural counselors. That review these projects and award monetary grants. For the projects to happen in our community. So it's extremely valuable. The cultural partnership that oversees the cultural district, we are more of a convener. So we. Have membership with cultural organizations, everything from um art galleries. Or individual artists to the museums and Mass Mutual. Um so there's a, a wide range of people who participate. And we convene um just about monthly on off months from our um board meetings. To talk about what is happening in our community, what needs, need to be addressed. Um what can you give and what do you need type of conversations? As well as during the pandemic, we've been focusing, focusing a lot on um hosting equity panels. So we've had a really incredible um array of and range of speakers to our community. To discuss topics around um equity and how we can incorporate that into our community and our organizations. Um and as individuals, but we do not. Give grants outside of the trust transfer. This is really, we received a grant and we're pumping that grant back into the community.
Oh, I see. And then that, that, I think it was hit on earlier, but I missed it. The, the grant for the trust transfer, where did that come from? If not from the cultural council?
It came from the Urban Agenda Grant through the state of Massachusetts. Um we applied, the city of Springfield. Was able to um take recommendations on projects to go forward. I believe that they sent three. Or four forward. Um I can find that. Ours was one of the recommended and we received that grant through the um. Office of um Economic Development.
How mu- how much is it in total?
Seventy thousand.
Oh, seventy thousand, okay. That's true.
I just wanted to add in there, Karen, you know, exactly right, that um the, the really, the interesting thing. Is that art funding is over here and public health funding is over here and near the twain shall meet historically ever. And the concept that that Mass Cultural Ca- Council had with Culture RX was why is that a thing? Because the people who can help to heal the community are the artists. And so if we could align funding. And so that's why this is so interesting because Karen and I were. Working with the Public Health Institute of Western Mass and with the Bay States and with the caring health. On the Culture RX partnership, which was just a, a, a pilot project they were working on to speak a common language. When COVID hit, they came to us and said, we need you all. Like this is, we, we need you to go big. And so it was through that initial, how can we use the artists? To be the grassroots communicators of trust and creativity, frankly. We, we had no money to do that. We were like, yeah, sure, we'd love to, but how can we do that? It was because of Karen and the cultural partnerships' knowledge of all the funding sources. Because that's a central repository for all of us to say, like, who can we go to and how can we do this? It was Karen's knowledge of the funding at the state level that allowed us to put this partnership together and apply for that grant. So if you think about all the pieces, that all the stars that had to line up, and then we couldn't just apply for the grant if the city, as Karen mentioned. If the city didn't say, this is a great idea, we wouldn't have gone past, you know, the first, the first door. So. Public health funding coming to us saying, we don't wanna just be communicating through the Bay State, you know, public relations department or the caring health. We need to do this very much from the bottom up. And that's why this is structurally something, as Ryan mentioned, that is replicable. For other um public health initiatives moving forward. Because this concept. Is all about building the foundation and building relationships that may not have known each other. But the door is through the funding by giving five hundred dollar mini grants that can be then used. To mul- for multiple artists. And it's not us who are deciding which artist should get funded. It's all of the partner organizations, just like we're talking about today, who get to decide who do we want to raise up. And then we just get to be in that amazing collection, a network of folks that we may have known and we may not know. Um but the, the BIPOC community is absolutely the funding recipients of this. And therefore, that concept of public health funding, artists coming together. To recognize artists that are already here doing the work and then actually paying them, that's the, that's the, that's the secret sauce for us.
That's terrific. And the, and the trust program, the art funding is, is only gonna be related to public health art projects. Is that right?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, but so there's, and Eileen and Vanessa and Karen might speak more to it, but to be more specific on that, Michael, there um. The piece where I was talking to one of the artists that I'm sponsoring, that, and I think Vanessa touched on it, is it. It might not be like in-your-face specific, like wear a mask or go get vaccinated. Um we're allowing artists to be creative to, to, to get that message across and the, and the piece that about coping. With COVID over this past year and all the things that have come from it, especially in communities of color. Um is something that kinda, you know, allows for more creative um. Interpretation as far as what the art is. And, and I think it's also important to think about. You know, I, I was originally always just thinking about paintings and drawings and, you know, there, you know, poems and songs and. Um sculptures and all types of different pieces of art, um even just a narrative about, you know, somebody who's a. Ro- a, a great artistic writer um could write something. So, you know, sky's kind of the limit.
That's terrific.
I'll add, we did work with, um on the messaging, we do have if artists and organizations need. Some guidance or suggestions with the Be Healthy Partnership in Springfield, which. Is Public Health Institute of Western Mass and Bay State and several other organizations. Created some public health messaging um points for us to share. So as organizations come on board. We're able to provide them with this list that's approved by the CDC, but also kind of targeted to. What Bay State sees as important and the Be Healthy Partnership as important aspects for our community to look into. But certainly the creativity behind that, I think you, when you're working with artists, you don't want to um. You know, hold them down to certain messages because you'd probably miss out on a, a lot of the self-expression.
Well, thank you very much. What can we, what can we do as a next step? We being the city council.
So I would love to, I think, um, well, there are two. So I think if there are wards that um, have artists, if there are counselors that would like to have artists from their ward participate. Um, certainly Vanessa is a pro at this and she's, she's leading the charge. She's gotten, we have se- several Springfield Public Schools participating. Um, countless faith community organizations, um, and cultural organizations as well as some individuals. Um, at mom's groups, and it's really incredible. So I would say that um, we can follow up with information to the city council as a whole on if they want to take that path to reach out to Vanessa. And if, if it's um, if that isn't feasible right now in your ward and you have suggestions for people we could reach out to instead that, to represent the artists from the individual wards, that would be wonderful, um, our neighborhoods. And for dissemination, ideas around places that we can disseminate the art. Um, we could certainly share some ideas of who thus far is participating. It's also on, on the website, which we'll include in the follow-up message. Can work with Ryan, who is really focusing on ideas for dissemination. And I think what we've learned is that the communities aren't as concerned about seeing their art um, on a billboard, but they would love to be able to walk after um, Saturday or Sunday service to the bakery with their grandmother and see that as a family. So really getting into the neighborhoods and at the places like Ryan suggested, where people actually live their daily lives and can share their art with their community will be really vital to the success of this program. Because um, that piece of the trust transfer is the artists have entrusted the city, I would say, with their artistic expression. And we have a huge responsibility to uphold our end of the trust bargain by putting it where it's most impactful for them and their community, because that's who they're making it for.
That's terrific. So um, I'm sure that each of us can think of a bunch of different locations that could work, depending on the nature of the art. It sounds like really two categories of requests. One is, do you know anybody we should be working with that's an artist? And number two, do you know anywhere that we should be considering to put it?
Exactly.
Absolutely.
So if you guys, go ahead. Um, if you put, if you had like, uh, what I'm thinking is if there was like a one pager, like it doesn't even need to be a flyer, maybe even a Word document that just like, that we could share with all thirteen of our colleagues. It says like, hey, if you want to submit some proposed locations, this is who you should contact, Vanessa. And if you have some artists, here are general parameters, they get five hundred bucks. And this is the different type of eligible art, please put us in touch. I think you'll get a lot of content from us on that. If I have like a, a document that I can share, because I'm not, I'm not qualified to, to prepare that. You guys know more about your program.
No, absolutely, Mike. I can send that to you today with everything that you need. For any counselors that wish to sign up, we have um, uh, incredible job form, online form that Karen created. And we're bouncing off of that to make it as easy as possible for you to say yes. And so we have a one-pager I can send to you today that you can share. And I really, really, um, uh, you know, hope that the counselors take a, a personal investment in this because this is an opportunity for each ward to just really be represented in such a powerful way um, around COVID, to be able to hear voices in the community. So I will certainly send that to you today and we can move forward. And I'm available to all the counselors for any questions that they might have um, around how we can get them started with artist support. And then also ideas around where we can have um, the art disseminated in the, the community, particularly in the coming weeks.
And uh, Mr. Chair, not to, um, and, and the counselors and, and Mr. President, to kind of put my government hat on for a second, I think you all should check with the clerk or the solicitor about the legality of you all taking a five hundred dollar grant and then giving that to certain artists. I mean, I don't see why it would be a problem, but I would think you might want to just check that as far as the legality of you all taking money in and then giving it out as an entity or as a lone counselor to an artist.
That's very good advice. And I would say that irrespective of whether or not that can be done, I don't think it, for me personally, I don't think I would feel comfortable doing that, even if you could. So if I put you in touch with somebody, somebody else has got to be the sponsor, because I don't want to touch the money.
Yeah, so that's, I mean, we were thinking about the council being a sponsor and then, you know, the, it's, it's just, yeah.
We could always sponsor artists through the cultural partnership. And then, right, we can highlight in a different way that the Springfield City Council as a whole put forth or sponsored, you know, highlighted this many artists. So we could work with you, once we receive art, to come up with language that best accommodates all of the needs, whether it's legal, but also we wouldn't want there to be a, you know, one counselor has a top-heavy representation of artists, right? So um, I think that this project really needs to be kind of even keeled and not be highlighting, you know, one organization did fifty pieces of art and this city counselor did one, right? So we're, um, it's about the artists and it's about the community. So I think that we could work out a way to get that done and get the, the money ultimately where it needs to be.
Yep.
Artists.
That's, yeah, that's the key. Just, we don't need it to flow through the council. I just think we should just void that piece altogether.
Yeah, I, I, I completely agree. Um, okay. And uh, yeah, I think, I mean, just candidly, I think you'll get a lot more from us in terms of locations and logistical support with that than with artists. Um, but I, I hope, and especially as Counselor Gomez said earlier, there's people that we are familiar with our respective communities. And um, hopefully we can introduce you to some folks that um, could be sponsored by another party altogether. That would be terrific.
That's wonderful. Thank you so much um, for the invitation. And I just, and I'm sorry that Cateri isn't here, um, Counselor Walsh, because she is, represents the city council on the board and she's a really wonderful um, partner. And I want to thank Counselor Williams for reaching out to me um, to talk about this. And of course, Counselor Fenton, thank you for agreeing to let us come on to this committee meeting and talk to all of the counselors about this project.
Thank you to everybody for your presentations and your attendance. Final closing question is, when is, when is this, this is happening now, right? When, when is it over? When is, when is it done ideally? What's your goal?
Ideally, it's over in June. You're going to see like a tornado effect.
In June?
Yes. It's like happening now. For months, we've been trying to uh, walk along this journey to be prepared and working with organizations, pairing them up with artists, doing all these things. And now we're, we're, we're having um, an opportunity to say that the artists are working on their projects, they're getting ready to submit them. And then in June was when you'll see all of this powerful explosion of artistic messaging in our community. So it's right around the corner and um, we hope that you'll say yes soon.
I'm glad that I asked. So I will, uh, I will get that right out as soon as you send it to me and um, we'll get moving on it right away then.
Yeah, not over in June, but the stuff will be out in June.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Got a comment?
Yeah. Yeah, please, Counselor.
Uh, you guys have touched us and looks like we have a good, a great agreement here of support. But I believe that we need to get down to the neighborhood council, council and do a presentation to them because they are a larger group and know the community a whole lot better than who is in the community. Instead of us, we're here to support and do as much as we can, but we need to get to the little guys down at the wards and talk to them about this opportunities that you are offering to the community.
Yes, Counselor, thank you for that. I have been in touch with several of the wards, um, neighborhoods councils throughout the city. And I'm making my way over to a lot of them today and tomorrow. So I'm hoping to be in touch with you um, that we might have a special connection that we can make on how particularly we could share uh, with the folks you have in mind. So thank you for that point. It's well taken.
You'll give me a call and I will commence work on Ward One right away. And you do have my telephone number, my contact, right?
Yes, I do. Thank you so much.
Great. Fabulous.
Okay. Anything else, anybody?
I would just say that um, one of the civic associations that I work with is East Forest Park. And they meet tonight. So um, at seven o'clock tonight, there'll be a Zoom. Uh, I will be on the Zoom. I can mention this if I know exactly what to mention. Um, I don't know what the agenda is. I haven't looked at the agenda for tonight, so I don't know how much time there is, but I'm happy to mention it tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. I will send you some information to be able to share with them, some brief little snippets. I'll give you some bullets you can share. Thank you so much.
That sounds good. Thanks.
All right. So we're going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everybody. We'll look out for that email from you, Vanessa, and good luck with the project. Thank you for all the terrific work you're doing for the city.